Right. Because last time I asked for the, for the patrol officer. I asked for the. Having had that experience. Recently, but I had to.
Maybe some of the security. So.
Having had that experience. Recently, but I had to.
Maybe some of the security. So. So. Is. I mean, that one's kind of.
Well, so I can't set that in line.
I know it's kind of. The word right and it's just like a general. Or something. She's gonna have. Your office. How many county counties? You know. Very. Parts of. Tell us. God or what? God. They sent me. Certainly just emailing.
Right. Yeah, that's always a thing. They sent you this, this letter that says no found, not no finding.
Lots of. You know. You have one person. We got a lot of. It was something. Have a password. Everybody has.
Okay, this is.
Yeah.
Is. Probably.
I can't change it. Yeah. To serve. Why does that test? Yeah, I think. This, this is why I need to go work at calls every once in a while. I don't. But it is a security.
Okay, same thirty.
All questions?
Thank you.
Okay, first order of business is, uh, just. Agenda.
Hearing that, I'm going to move to approve the agenda as presented. Seconded.
Seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous. Uh, next up is public comment. Anybody here to speak from the public? On Zoom. Okay, so. Eighteen minutes, forty minutes of the April nineteenth meeting.
I'm going to move to approve the minutes of the April nineteen, two thousand twenty-three Commissioner's Special Meeting as presented with the, with the correction of changing the word "or" to the word "if" in the first motion. Seconded.
Seconded, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. You opposed. Yes. ERP Mission Broadband Update Report, I see John. There he is.
Good morning Commissioners.
Alright.
So, yeah, I wanted to talk about, uh, the town of Orland. Um, they've put together a package with, uh, Consolidated CCI. And we will put, we will have a report for you to review at the next meeting for your, to take action on. Uh, it's going to be for, the quest is going to be two hundred thousand dollars. Um, and there, they also have town money that they're putting towards it. Um, CCI is putting money towards it, and then this will all be contingent on, um, they're going to apply to MCA for the next grant round, which will be in August of this year. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. They've made good progress on it. They've done a lot of work locally there. So they're ready to, um, bring that forth and, and ask, uh, for your review.
So John, the two hundred thousand, that was just a commitment by us. It's not a payment until they get full funding, is that correct?
That is correct.
And, and you'll have, you know, what the, what the expected outlay from each NPD is when you report.
Yeah, I will have the whole full report like you normally see. I'll have that to you the week, you know, you'll have it before the meeting so you can look at it.
Great, thank you. John. Anything else, John?
Yeah, so the, um, the, if you remember the Ru- Rural Broadband Access Corporation, um, ARVAC. Uh, you had set aside eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand last year. Um, they have officially dissolved. So, um, I think you have tentatively anyway, taken that money aside anyway, but it's, it's official now. They said that has dissolved, and the reason that is, is for the next update. The, the state had won that NTIA grant for that Blue Hill Peninsula. And just wanted to give you an update on that. That is not a hundred percent complete, but it is, um, come a long ways. I'll say maybe eighty, eighty-five percent complete is my understanding from the folks down there. So they are, people are getting, um, broadband on fiber to the premise from Consolidated, and they seem to be, um, happy with their services right now. So I think the, the work the Commissioners did in this, this project, you know, helped stimulate some, some activity over there. And so in the end, they got a different grant round, um, all worked out well, and there's, oh, what is it? Seven towns or so over there that are now being connected and have full fiber to the premise. So just want to give you that update, but ARVAC is dissolved and the, the peninsula does have fiber to the premise.
And when, uh, as, when, we won't be asked to contribute towards the, uh, Peninsula project?
That is done. Nope, that is done.
Yeah.
Um, which kind of brings us to the, the other last piece I'll have for you today is just kind of that overall solution of, of do we, you know, do we take the, um, pieces of, I'll say, the remaining ARP money? Uh, go towards a countywide RFP, see what we can stimulate, you know, for activity there. Um, if there's a match from the county that can make that happen, you know, see, see what that brings about. I showed you a, uh, quick view of a map last time. Um, so we will come with a, uh, more of a formal proposal for our work, I'll say, and what it would actually, the, the work that it would entail and how we would look and how we would go, go about that. Um, for you guys to look at next, uh, to the next meeting. But I would not act, ask for any action at that meeting, um, because I, I think this takes a little bit of time for education and understanding and feedback from the, you know, from the Commissioners and, you know, questions. And then we can give you feedback on that, the idea of that proposal, and then maybe on the following, um, one of the following meetings, then maybe we can, we'll ask for some action, whether it's worth going forward or not. Um, and just as, as an understanding, that is, you know, that will not be for this grant round, which is August. It will be further out into next year when the new, I'll say the new, what they call it bead money coming from the government, but still MCA. Uh, when MCA opens another grant round next year, I would say that would, that would fall into that, because it will take some time to run through the RFP process.
JD, help me understand this a little bit. The RFP, we're going to request proposals from providers? Who are going to survey the entire county, county to see the need?
Um. Sorry. Yeah, well, yeah, I was going to say, what would you, we're, we're going to, that kind of like that map that we showed you, we're going to work with MCA and actually be down to the, uh, I'll call it street segment that says, okay, this, these, this portion of this town is unserved. And this portion of this town is unserved, because it's, there's very few, if any, I'll say, but there's a couple of small towns, you know, that are going to take a bigger project, if you will, or a bigger build. Um, but a lot of them are just segments of roads, right? They're not, they're not full towns like, you know, Orland's going to be a full build. You did Sur, you did Eagle, you know, you did, did a few of these islands, Swan's Island, right? Those are full, full-on builds. What's left are pockets.
Why? Do these pockets exist in communities who are working with us now for, to get total coverage for the communities?
Some of, yeah, some of them do, yep.
As some of these communities, those communities who you surveyed a year ago, who said, you know, we don't, we don't have a committee, we don't have the time, we don't have the interest, you know, as, as some of them.
I'm sure we're going to come across some of those gaps, yep. And that, I think, needs to be part of this process as to what is, what is the town's engagement as we do this.
But haven't we already done that? I mean, that's what we, you did a complete survey of the county over a year ago, and what's the RFP entity going to do that you haven't done already with regards to try to generate interest in, in identified needs and so on?
Um, that's a great, great question, Commissioner, and I, I, I don't know that I have a solid answer for that. Besides, I was looking at it from a, from a viewpoint of, okay, how do we solve all those gaps, right? And.
You're not going to solve the gaps if we don't get a buy-in from the community, right?
I, I think, I, I, I think, and it's going to be requirement, you know, also from MCA, that there is, there is some buy-in from these communities. And so this will put it out there. Again, we'd have to re, you know, I'll say re-engage them, so to speak, contact them again. And if they're still, you know, if there's a no, then we pull them off the RFP and say they're not, you know, they're not part of it.
It seems to me this is like a last ditch effort to say, okay, are you interested in solving the problem of these identified pockets?
Yep.
Okay.
That's how I.
Well, I, I think probably your presentation in two weeks, JD, is going to be telling, because, uh, I'm getting to the point where I'm saying that you can't lead a hostel, you can lead a hostel of water, but you can't make them drink. And how many times are we going to beg these communities to get on board who aren't interested or don't have the, have the resources or whatever the problem is? And, you know, I'm getting to the point where cut our losses, take our AP money, move it to something more, it's more, well, accepted from the public, I guess. So be prepared for that, uh, that type of, you know, discussion in two weeks.
Sure, absolutely, Commissioners.
Any other questions for JD? JD, you all set?
I look like Miller had his hand up.
Here's a question, where are we as far as Eagle Island?
Um, I have not heard back from them. I can reach out and see where they.
I knew they got a grant from Island Institute.
Yeah.
And I've been in contact with Bill Ginn and Krista Thaw, Thaw.
Yep.
But it seemed.
Yeah, and I think they were using Markwell at it axiom, so I can reach out to those folks and.
But they will fall, they will fall under the UT TIF money for the broadband.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to move to accept and file the Mission Broadband Report as presented.
Seconded. Moved in second, and any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So.
Thank you, JD.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, UT, we have Miller's report before us. Miller, do you have anything to add?
We have graded, uh, Matten Ridge Road. Uh.
Excuse me, Miller, anything to add to the report?
No.
I'm going, I'm going to move to accept and file the UT report as presented.
Moved in second, and any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, and Miller, do you?
Just. Matten Ridge Road has been graded, and I've been trying to get ahold of Dwayne Jordan to grade Backroad. Um, and, but just a heads up, I think we're going to have to look at doing some work on Backroad this summer.
That's the old Route Nine?
Yes.
Yep.
And access is loyal and mountain pond.
Yep.
It was a paved, you know, it was the old Route Nine, it was paved. We ground it in place in two thousand fifteen. But over eight years with the snow plowing and everything, a lot of the material has been pushed off on the shoulder. Every time they grade it, they pull it back in, but when they pull it back in from the shoulder, there's so much, uh, pollution from leaves and limbs and other debris that we really don't want in our road. But I'm thinking we may want to look at paving this this summer.
No, we'd only pave though to the entrance of the Lead Mountain, we wouldn't, we wouldn't go to the, where the bridge is out, right?
We'd go across the bridge to the Lead Mountain Pond Road, but we wouldn't go around the rest of the loop back to Route Nine.
Oh, I thought there was a bridge that we had to discontinue and needed work or something?
No.
No.
There's a bridge there, it's the Stavation Branch Bridge. That's in good shape right now. Someday we will have to look at that, but, uh.
Is the public using the east end of that, that road?
No. No.
They're all coming in the, the west end?
The east end is almost ATV.
Out of that trail system?
Yep. Spencer keeps the sides of it bush hogged, but other than that, it's, it's growing in pretty bad.
Yeah. Uh, grading up the Mans Ridge, you do that yourself with a tractor or do you hire somebody?
No, uh, I hired Dean Young.
Dean, yep.
Yep. Some of these roads get some bad over the winter, but the tractor won't touch them until they get graded once. And then after they grade it once and get it smoothed up, then I can go over it with a rocker and keep it smooth.
Okay, thank you, Miller. Any other questions for? Great, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Airport, we have, uh, Leroy's monthly report. For us, anything to add, Leroy?
Nope.
I'm going to move then to accept and file the airport report as presented.
Seconded. Seconded, any questions? Further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So unanimous. Next up is, uh, request approval for upgrade to the HVA, uh, seat control system in the terminal building in the amount of eighteen thousand two hundred dollars with main controls being a sole source vendor. Leroy?
Um, I did, um, to make this, uh, the argument, I guess, for the sole sources, I did talk to Dennis up there. And actually, he came down and looked at the system while the main control folks were here getting us back up and going after we've been down for over a week. Um, thi- this has been a, a problem for, well, ever since I've been here. Um, but once a month, we end up having to call main controls, have them reset. The thermostats are all Wi-Fi'd in the terminal building for some reason or other, and they'll stop communicating with their control box and it seems, again, we have to call main controls, they log into the system, they reset it, and then we get the bill for, you know, a couple hundred bucks, give or take, or whatever to, to do it. And over two years, we've spent about six, a little over six thousand dollars with them just resetting these controls and working on it. Seems to be like it might be time.
Where's the money coming from?
Uh, we're going to use the airport recovery money. Um. Uh, I don't have that account with me. It was in the, it was in the report, I think.
Yeah.
Is where we was looking at getting it from.
I'm going to move to approve the upgrade to the HBAC control system in the terminal building in the amount of eighteen thousand two hundred dollars with main controls being a sole source vendor.
Seconded. Moved in seconded. Any further questions or comments?
I will come up with a transfer sheet for the next.
Sure, next meeting.
Yep.
Uh. Leroy, my guess is that the new control system will be wired?
Correct, correct. Their, their proposal is to wire those thermostats to, uh, to the control. And, and part of the problem is, is the, some of the components in the system are now obsolete. Um, so they, and they're not really servicing them anymore. So it's like they have one guy that really knows this system. So the reason it took us over a week to get it back up and running, or everything working correctly, was he was on vacation. Luckily, it's, you know, springtime, so, um, the heat, I guess the heat was on, but we was just unable to control it. Really, it, it's really a bizarre system.
Yes, this, it sounds.
Yeah, the components are unsupported, so there's no replacement and there's no workaround or patch to fix. The, it's access points, which referring to is a, or many mode, uh, mode. Router type thing that all of these thermostats answer to. And when that goes down, not only do they have to reset it, they have to, uh, uh, re-enter the IP address for the thing to get it to, to answer. And it answers until it experiences some blip or, or some condition that it's dead in the water and starts up.
I, I need a clarification on the funding here. I was under the impression you were talking about your recovery money, your AP, airport AP money?
Um, it's, yes, it's.
Well, that, is that in the reserve account, an equity account?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
It is there for separate.
And they got put in, okay.
Yep.
Yep, it's a G account, so that's, yeah, so it's fine, right, I'm fine.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 So unanimous, thank you very much, Leroy.
Thank you.
Uh, EMA, we have the monthly report in front of us.
I'm going to move to accept and file the EMA report as presented.
Moved in second, any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye.
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 So unanimous.
And by the way, gentlemen, uh, Andy and I are, are taking a trip down to see the EMA building and the new building at, uh, Waldorf County after this meeting today, so. Working towards Andy's new building.
Okay, next up is jail. Um. First up is, uh, request approval to hire Dex Brown of Elsworth as part-time on-call as needed corrections officer effective May eighth. Step nine A with no benefits.
So moved.
Seconded. Anything to add to?
Yes, we just went to the, May sixth is a Saturday.
Oh, that's right, too.
May sixth, could just change that. All three of those should be, should be May sixth instead of May eighth.
Okay, so is that reflected in your motion?
I, yeah, my motion is going to reflect that May sixth is the starting date.
And that's okay with the second?
Yes.
So moved in seconded, any further discussion or questions? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So unanimous. Next up is request approval to hire Justin McNeil of DRIL's part-time on-call as needed corrections officer effective May sixth. Step nine A with no benefits.
So moved.
Seconded. Moved in seconded, ten, anything to add?
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So unanimous. Next up is request approval to hire Jeffrey Spiny.
Spiny.
Spiny, however, as full-time corrections officer effective May sixth. At step nine A with full benefit.
So moved.
Moved in seconded, anything to add, Tim?
Nope.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Unanimous, thank you very much. Next up is the sheriff, um, request to sell, or request permission to sell cruisers by sealed bid. We have a spreadsheet, uh, with, uh, cruisers, Jeff and.
Did you see the top from the red, uh, the two thousand seventeen, the red highlighted town of Orland would like to buy that one for, uh, animal control.
So top four, if, if I move to approve putting up to bid for sale by sealed bid one, twenty fifteen, and five, twenty seventeen Ford Cruisers, does that cover all of them?
Yeah, but we're, we're not going to put all of those out, Commissioner. We, what I would ask to put out is to top four, one, two thousand and fifteen, three, two thousand and seventeen, three. Not, yeah, number five, we want to ask permission next year to sell that one to the town of Orland.
So my motion is to approve putting up to bid for sale by sealed bid one, twenty fifteen Ford Cruiser, and three, twenty seventeen Ford Cruisers.
Okay, so, uh, I, I'm looking at the, the one highlighted in red is number seventy-seven, right?
Uh, it's the two thousand, number five, yes. Yes, number, it's unit seventy-seven.
Okay, number five, you're looking at the, perfect, so that, so you're, you're.
And we'd like.
Your motion makes sense.
And we'd like to leave the cage in it for them, because it will not fit in anything else.
Yeah. Okay, so first up is the ones for sealed bid, right?
First four, yes.
Seconded. Okay. Moved in seconded, any further discussion? Clarification or session? All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Unanimous.
So I'm going to approve the sale of one twenty seventeen Ford Cruisers at the town of Orland, and are you suggesting the same five thousand dollars that we sold to Sullivan? My motion is force five thousand dollars.
And, and just be, uh, to clarify, that's unit seventy-seven.
Correct.
Moved in seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next up is request approval to hire Galen McDonough of, of Oranquin as part-time deputy effective May sixth. Uh, at step twelve A, twenty-three, eighty-four.
Scott, can we talk about these for a minute? This strikes me as odd, uh, you have two more.
I do.
And, geez, I can't remember the last time you hired part-time deputies or, nobody's hiring part-time deputies anymore.
Question.
Pardon?
So that's a good question, I'll explain it to you.
Yeah.
We have, Galen McDonough has, uh, we've interviewed him for a full-time position. Believe it or not, that he would, is very interested in taking the spot out on Swan's Island. His wife or girlfriend, I'm not sure whether they're married at this point, uh, they have family out there, very interested in going to Swan's Island. So in order to get him through the process that we now have to go through for the academy, for him to be a part-time officer to start, he has to, he's at the point where he needs to be hired, or sponsored by an agency. By hiring him as a part-time deputy, we can sponsor him getting through phase two, phase three, and then work towards getting through the academy so that we can send him on Swan's Island. Uh, and that's the same thing with, with these other two.
And then they would become full-time, is that?
He, he is, uh, excuse me, he's currently a corrections officer, and we hired him as a corrections officer, must have been pretty close to a year ago. He applied for a patrol position. Um, we offered him a, a position in jail, said, why don't you go try the jail and see if this is something you really want to do? He's done an outstanding job in the jail, it's really, um, if, if we can make this work with Swan's Island, it'll be just a transfer from, from the jail to here. But again, for him to get the appropriate training, he's got to be sponsored by an agency.
But he's going to need full-time training to go to Swan's Island, correct?
Correct.
How soon's he get there?
We'll hire him full-time, knowing to fill that open spot on Swan's Island. We, we've got to go through the part-time process first, he's got to go through phase one, which he's completed. Phase two, where it's necessary to be sponsored by an agency, which would be asked. In phase three, he has to have eighty hours of actual seat time.
So phase two is what?
Phase two is a two-week class, and we've got him all scheduled, he and Anthony Jones, they have it in Vanguard, it's a two-week class in actual, in the classroom.
So when does he go full-time? To get?
Uh, that's what we're working on. We'd like to think that we're getting him in, in August, but we may be up against such timeframe that we may not be able to. But as being a part-time, we can still use him here, there, Swan's Island.
Isn't he limited to the number of hours his part-time?
Thousand forty, correct.
So if you don't get him in August, he can't work?
He's, he's still working with Timmy in the jail, too. He's, actually, we just discussed it again this morning, he's, with him being a deputy, he can use him more comfortably as a transport officer in jail.
So who's paying for him in jail if he becomes a part-time deputy?
Depends on where, if he's working in the jail, that'll be building a jail budget, and if it's working for me, it'll be out of my part-time budget.
How much time is he going to need to get through the part-time level of training? How much, how many hours is that?
Well, it's two weeks of eighty hours up there, then he'll need eighty hours, uh, of actual seat times that he has to ride with the patrolman. So when he does that, he'll go through his FTO or no program. This is unfortunately the process we have to go.
I, I understand that, but my, I guess my issue is, is that are we paying to train him to go to Swan's Island?
Yes.
Which I think is, because if he leaves Swan's Island, we won't be paying Swan's Island.
Exactly.
Thirty-two thousand, but nevertheless, uh, four weeks, four weeks of training for him. Because we're, we're going to be talking twenty-five dollars an hour if he gets part-time deputy.
Yeah.
That's, uh, that's twelve thousand dollars. A thousand dollars a week, I mean, it's, I'm sorry, it's, uh, four thousand, four thousand dollars. And that gets him trained as part-time deputy. Then when he goes in, if he gets in the academy in August, who's going to pay for that?
That's, we'll get, we're in discussion with Swan's Island for him, that he'll be the person that's coming out there, so they'll have to assume the cost.
Here's the issue, guys, if, if, if we train this guy, this guy gets trained, has to go to the academy eighteen weeks. Uh, and a thousand dollars, that's eighteen thousand dollars we're going to pay to get him trained, plus incidental costs, probably twenty grand, I mean, just done.
Yeah, with all the equipment.
Something like that, twenty grand, we'll say. That's what it's going to cost us if we pay to train him. But if we don't, turn, I pay to train him, and we, Swan's Island pays for him, and he goes to Swan's Island, will say for a year, decides he doesn't like it. And the sheriff wants to bring him back because he's a full-time trained deputy, which, I don't blame the sheriff for asking that. Then Swan's Island is going to want the equivalent of eight thousand dollars for every year left in a five-year time period for him, or thirty-two thousand dollars that we're going to have to pay Swan's Island to retain a deputy who belongs to us in the first place. Understand that, the, the.
The only way he'd be coming back is if we had an opening. You wouldn't bring him back, because it's the last.
But I can hear you saying, uh, we have, it's hard enough to find deputies.
It is, I agree.
You should, you, I would not be at all surprised at when I blame you for making that pitch.
Yep.
We need to find the money, we need to bring this guy back, he's our deputy, he's trained, he understands, so anyways. trained, he understands. So anyways. But even if there was a full-time opening in this, in the patrol division and whatnot, we'd still have to pay that thirty-two thousand to Swans Island. So I'm, I'm thinking that we should be paying for his training despite the fact it's twenty grand. And twenty grand on top of the four thousand, it's going to cost him to get the part-time training and whatnot. It's twenty-four thousand in, in this budget year alone for him. And, uh.
I'm not sure I follow you, but so if Swans Island, if your scenario happened, there'd be a buyout to get him back here, right?
We'd have to, we'd have to pay off his training.
So if we pay. And he stayed at Swans Island, then we're out. Right?
We would have, yeah, we would have paid for that, uh, or, because if he stayed there the full five years, then nobody gets paid anything.
That's right.
And whatnot. So, yeah, it's. I mean, that really, that really is a, if he stays there five years, we have paid the equivalent of less than five thousand dollars a year for his training to stay there. That solves a problem for five years that we've had for, for forty years. You know what I mean? That's good news. I'm, I'm saying that I'm more than glad that the five thousand, that young fellow stayed on Swans Island for five, eight years. So it's Sunday's break, so.
And he's expressed to us that, that they are looking to purchase land out there and build a house out there. But, you know, I know things change right now.
Significant other, his family out there, which gives us a layup that he might stay a while.
So, so this seems like.
Okay, so I'm suggesting that we consider paying for this, but where's the money going to come from? It's my, my next issue. And I'm going to propose that we do pay for this, and we pay for it out of the money that we have given the sheriff to hire a full-time deputy effective July first. He's been giving funds, additional funds in his salary account for a full-time deputy. And if we use that money for twenty-twenty's free to get this young man trained, uh, for the academy and.
Would that mean he'll be a deputy? Sure.
No, that means he won't get the deputy he's looking for July first, and we have to wait till December thirty-first, or January first of next year, and then hire him. He'll have it next year. He just won't get it. He'll have to delay that hire for six months.
Well. I don't, I, I guess, um, I, I heard this argument live. I, I just don't see why we would pay to train a deputy that we know is going to go out there. And if, I guess I'm, I, I guess I'm looking for your side of the story.
My side of the story is we cannot find a loop-in. We had absolutely zero interest from anyone else to go out there. So this miraculously can help us solve a problem. I, I don't agree with spending that money for that position that's coming on in July because the next person I'm asking for is someone that we would like to hire for that position. What I would suggest that possibly we use some of that money that we have to buy out in that reserve account. I don't have that doll figure in front of me right now. Where we buy out someone that's had, say, three years' experience or two years' experience, that's where I would ask that money come from.
But why, why do that now? Why offer to pay, the sheriff has not asked to pay for that, right?
But what's that?
This first, this Swans Island.
The sheriff isn't telling us anything about this guy until today. It's now we find out that this isn't a part-time deputy. This is a deputy who's going to be determined to be full-time because you can't get in the academy until you're full-time. So he's going to be, he's going to go very quickly from part-time to full-time if he's going to get him into the August academy. So this is really a full-time hire agenda. This is not a part-time hire. This is not somebody that he wants to have standing by for the next ten years in case he needs an extra patrolman. This is a full-time position. So we need to talk about the impact of having another full-time position. I wouldn't pay for it. It's going to affect the operation and the budget and so on. That's what we're doing.
Also. I'm jumping ahead here, but my guess is that this is the case for all three.
Uh, the second one, uh, Anthony Jones is one that, that we would like to hire for that open, uh, position that's in the budget, but with beginning July one. And the last one is someone that has been working with, I say working, he is interning with us, uh, and is someone that has decided that he would love to work here at some point. So in order to get him where he would be eligible, we have a position, is do the same thing as a part-time deputy.
And with regards to who pays for the deputy out there, it's, it's a coin toss. It's a crapshoot. Because we lose, we, we end up paying what we didn't have to if he stays there five years. We make out. If he goes out there for a year, he and his significant other have been falling out, and he moves out, she's going to stay. He's not going to, and she's not going to. So anyways, so if you don't know, you haven't got a crystal ball, we don't know the future, is what I'm saying, that I would rather spend the equivalent of less than five thousand a year to send him out there for five years instead of having to pay thirty-two thousand to Swans Island because they trained him and he left within the first year. So I'm just saying, that's my position. And if, if that loop-in went through, I'm saying that, uh, he should, that, uh, the sheriff only has so much money. As far as his buyer, we've been trying to build that up because, I can tell you, sheriff, it's only twenty-four and something like that.
Yeah.
And that's the, it's eight thousand dollars a year. So, I mean, uh, we've been trying to build that up because the day's going to come, we're going to spend forty grand to get him out of the academy because there is nobody else out there. We don't build that up. If we let him drain that account, you're going to be scratching your head trying to find anywhere from twenty-five to forty thousand dollars to buy him up.
But he's not advocating about spending.
But sure, he wants to spend his bio money to pay his deputy to go to the academy.
Right now, I'm just going to hire him as a part-time deputy and get him standing along the process. I have seventy-five hundred dollars in my part-time budget. That's in there right now. That's cool. We can start working on that. We can work with Swans Island, make some work for both of us. This is affecting everything that's come up. It's come up recently.
So this is step one.
Yes. It's, it's, you don't address each step today, gentlemen. You're going to be faced with a situation where you're in too deep. This whole situation, and quite honestly, irritates me. He's coming in, you're talking about a part-time deputy instead of giving us the whole plan. I want to bring this guy on, I want to get him trained, I want to get him to the academy, I want to send to Swans Island and whatnot.
I, I think that's what I'm doing. When was I supposed to do that?
Well, if I should know, if you could send us some information that gave us some sense of what these people were. You didn't think I was going to be amused by the fact that all of a sudden, three part-time deputies? We've never had part-time deputies around here for years.
I'm not even going to respond to that question.
Well, I'm going to move that we put, take this under advisement for two weeks and that we, uh, come back in two weeks after we thought about this and whatnot, and possibly take action. That's my motion.
Seconded motion. So moved and seconded.
And my motion applies to all three part-time deputies.
Sheriff, someone, uh, in theory, when, uh, the officers full-time and go to Swans Island, at that point, uh, that sound is covered by Swans.
Yes, is it, they pay, yeah, it's forty-hour contract, forty hours a week. They have a, an apartment that they stay in out there, so forth and so on.
And the second hire is your?
Someone that I would.
Hope that that one's going to be your July full-time.
Correct. Correct.
And your third request. Which was, so I forget, where are we at with how many people we said we were going to hire this year? I know we had this July one, it's just the one. So.
Because we, the January one, I'd ask the one in January, ask the one in July, and the one in January, we cut out a budget and approved the one in July.
So the third one would be for?
He's, he's an intern right now.
So he would, he would be part-time. In other words, you could use him part-time.
And using the airport, and using the contracts, those types of things.
Those types of things. And then when you have an opening, you would have somebody that?
We would A, have, have, uh, a flavor of how he works out and him to say, yeah, I'd like to come here full-time.
If there was an opening?
If there was an opening.
If there isn't an opening and he's gone to the academy and all that, then it'd be a buyout.
Well, we're not, right now, I'm not planning on sending him to the academy until we had
Until we had a spot.
Correct. The only one that I would send to the academy right now, uh, well, would be McDonough and, Jones. One to fill an open position here, one to fill a contract on Swans Island. And we've jumped through hoops and hoops and hoops to fill Swans Island. It's almost one of the things, I just saw my hands up and say, I'm sorry, we can't.
Sheriff, I forget. Where are we at with this school resource officer?
Ironically, I have a, a young lady that's coming in, um, today's what, Tuesday, Thursday, I believe. Uh, she was in the office last week. We spoke to her about it, that she's interested in being a school resource officer. She has some experience in corrections and so forth and so on.
Okay, so what we have is a motion on the floor to take this under advisement. Till the next meeting.
The key piece, if they're not approved today as part-time, I can't get them in the phase two, which is the middle part of this month, uh, which means it delays that, that I've got to go somewhere else. God only knows where else I've got to go to get them in. Uh, actually, Lucas is taking care of it himself. He's going to Auburn, uh, if approved as part-time deputy.
Then there's money in the part-time budget to pay these.
Yeah, well, Lucas is doing this all on his own. And I mean, he's done that with his, um, with his internship and that, and he's, uh.
There's not enough money in the part-time budget. It's four thousand dollars per deputy for the part-time training. And, uh, so two of them is eight thousand. He's only got seventy-five hundred in his budget for part-time deputies for the rest of the year. Yeah, I'm sorry.
McDonough, he works in jail. He was staff, he was to staff the academy at the jail for this week. We did unrolling expecting he was going to be halfway through when this to happen. So if that's the case, if he's not, he can have no contact with inmates at all at this time. Because he's not certain, he's not corrections officer beyond this one year term. So. Yeah, part-time went through, we got you using in the jail as a deputy, where he helps us in the jail right now. I've been using him in the jail, helping to administrate his stuff.
But he's, he's the Swans Island deputy, right?
Yes.
And of all the three, that's the one that we're hoping that we can somehow employ, get him trained by the end of this year and send him to Swans Island. So I don't have a problem approving. What's his name, McDonough?
Galen McDonough.
McDonough. But it's going to be on the caveat that, that, that when he gets trained and whatnot, the, the funding for that training, that the full-time academy come the first of August comes out of that, uh, July first deputy money. And that decision has to be made today because once you hire this guy, start training in part-time, you've started the wheels in progress, and you can't stop those. I mean, it's a waste of, of, of our part-time money to stop it and not send him to the academy in August. The problem is, is that I, I understand the position the sheriff is in, but he's, he's, his wish list just can't be supported by his budget. So I withdraw my motion. If you gentlemen will agree that you'll pay for this Swans Island deputies' full-time academy training from the July first patrol deputies' monies. And the sheriff will have to wait until January of next year to hire that person.
Right. Okay, so you're.
Hire what, which person?
Person you was going to hire in, in July. You'll have to put off hiring.
Just, so you're withdrawing your motion?
No. I want to, I want to hear from you on whether, how you're going to pay for this McDonough there to go to the academy. How are you going to pay for that?
That's a question for the sheriff.
Well, he's already said he wants to take it out of his, his bio.
We may not be able to get him into the academy in August. We, we're such, I talked to the acting director down, down there, and the timeframe is very, very short.
So if, if you did. Let's say you were successful. Where would that money, where would that money come from?
I was going to work with Swans Island.
So why decide where it's coming?
Because it's, A, if Swans Island says, no, we're not going to pay for this guy and whatnot, and B, I'm saying that's, that's a risk that we should not have to take. That we don't need to take that kind of a risk. If we pay for this guy and whatnot, well, basically, it's the equivalent of less than five thousand a year for five years. Or the risk of having to pay up to thirty-two thousand dollars to buy this guy to pay off Swans Island if the guy left and came back. These are the ifs that, that drive me crazy. On the first day, he brings this issue to us, and that's why this is all the more reason why we should put this whole thing off for two weeks. But if you're, if you're willing to say today, we're going to take the money from the July first deputy, then we can hire this McDonough.
But we don't. My point is that we don't need to make that decision today.
Well, you'd better, if you want my support for hiring this guy, then we'd better talk about it. And you people should know because you're going to be faced with that sooner or later. And it's great to set up both today what you're going to do three months down the road when, when the academy's ready to accept it.
Okay, so let's say that came to fruition. You would pay for it out of your. How would you pay for it? I guess you've answered that once, but I guess I should hear it again.
What I would ask is if we, uh.
Oh, no, you, you said, we're asked Swans Island to pay for it. That's interesting.
And you haven't had any discussion with them paying for the academy?
No, we've talked to them that we have a candidate that's interesting, but we're trying to take care of the individual here. Is he definitely interested in this? And yes, he definitely is now. So. And what going on is assumption that every person that's hired part-time ends up with a full-time position here. That's not true. That's not true. Not every part-time person that's hired here, whether it's in the jail or whether it's here, patrol, ends up with a full-time position.
Which is ironic you say that. Because two out of three of the ones he lost today, he lost full-time.
I do. I do, because they have open positions.
Yeah, no, yeah, but those are open positions.
Correct. One of them is currently funded, starting July one, and the other one is up to our responsibility to figure out the funding with it if Swans Island will go along with, with the arrangement.
And if Swans Island doesn't, then we have.
Then it's an issue we need to address.
And that issue should have been addressed for today. We should know. Academy training, training's twenty-four thousand, which is at the end.
To send him to the academy, uh, to send him to the eighteen-week academy, Commissioner, it's three thousand dollars for academy, the, uh, academy charges us, plus their incidentals now. Incidentals, unfortunately, are fairly expensive now. You have to buy uniforms, et cetera, et cetera. So that runs probably two thousand to twenty-five hundred, depending on what they have.
And you're going to pay the guy a thousand dollars a week, eighteen thousand plus another five, that's twenty-three thousand dollars the academy's going to cost.
So we're trying to ask Swans Island?
I'm not asking. I'm thinking that's, I think that's, that's, I don't think we should do that. Because I agree with the sheriff. If he comes back and says, hey, I can't find loop-in people, I can't find full-time people. We got this guy all trained, he understands spillment, he's, he's fully trained, understands the office, but he doesn't want to stay at Swans Island anymore, and I have an opening, I want to bring him back. Well, if Swans Island paid for it, we're going to have to get to Swans Island and check for thirty-two grand if he leaves in the first year. If, if we're going to settle this out today so that we don't have to keep dragging this on, we'll, we'll consider him as a full-time person to fill that July spot, and we'll work towards, uh, getting him trained. If we can get him in, you know, I may not be able to get him in till January of next year, which will throw monkey wrench in it again. Uh, and then look at, uh, if I can get the other two part-time, so that we can get them trained, so that if, does it, when, if McDonough, uh, or when McDonough decides he wants to take that spot out there, we can transfer him out here and hire one of these other two candidates.
Well, and plus, there's a complication of the jail, I, which I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you're getting deputized, we can use him more than, even more valuable to, to the jail, what he's going to train and such.
Well, plus, it would, it would show the young man a path that he, there's, there's.
He's done everything, Commissioner, and beyond that we've asked him to do, uh, to be eligible for a full-time patrol position.
Okay, so. So you're saying, you're, you're saying, okay, take the money out of my July money, hire him as the July first deputy now as part-time, and he'll go full-time July first. and he'll go full-time July first and then go to the academy that we'll pay for.
Theoretically, if he can go to the academy, yep.
And we'll work. If he doesn't, he's your July first deputy for the summer of all.
And that's if I can have, I'd like to have those other two as part-time too, so that we can get them trained so we have a pool of people to draw from when we send him to Swan's Island.
Yeah, I, I'm, Bill, I, I, I understand your point, but I, I also understand it's hard to get deputies and especially, will, I mean, law enforcement's, it's a challenge right now.
That's been, been a lot.
Yeah. And I know there's, you know, some holes in this plan or, or, I don't know about holes, but, you know, potential hurdles.
A lot of things have to fall into place, does that fit when put it?
But I, I don't know, I, I, I wouldn't support this, I guess.
So, the, the problem is though, there's no budget for two part-time deputies. Yeah, well, but, so let's say, let's say we hired, uh, for the July first position, that's a candidate potentially is going to go to Swan's Island. It all goes great, gets at the academy. Now we don't have to pay, we don't need to start on our payroll after that happens, right? Swan's Island's going to pay for it.
No, no, he's not payable, but that money's in the budget now.
John, we really need to consider paying for this guy. And when we send him to the academy so that we can control what happens to the buyout money if he leaves and goes somewhere else.
But, but, you know, on, on the other side of that, so does Swan's Island.
Well, that's the, that's the bugaboo guys. Swan's Island's saying, you're going to have this guy for eighteen weeks and bill me for it, I get no service and whatnot. And you're going to, and this eighteen weeks is critical in this guy's career. And Swan's Island's going to pay for it? And, you know what I mean? And they're not going to have any service on, on the island for it? I don't blame Sunny and the crew out there for saying, you know, I understand this may be the only way, but that's more than we're going to pay. That's twenty-three thousand dollars that you're going to charge us to enable the academy and that's just beyond, uh, paper building or whatever. And that issue could have been, it should have been settled before. But, well, couldn't, couldn't you, couldn't you hire the guy as the, uh, as a full-time July person? As a, as an academy, as he's done the academy, then we've paid for it, right? We paid for everything. Then.
Then you send him.
Then send it to Swan's Island.
Right, sign a contract to Swan's Island for, 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 hold it for law enforcement contract. Send him out there, Swan's Island starts paying the bill for him, and then the sheriff comes back with another candidate for full-time to replace him as the deputy that he would have hired in July first. But in order to do that, I would like to have those other two approve this part-time so that they can get themselves through the process.
I don't have any problem, but it's, it's not a case of where he's going to get the second part-time deputy hired part-time today and then come to us July first and say, now I want it full-time out of my, out of my budget. Because he's using the full-time July first money for his contract.
I think I just said that, uh.
I, I want to make sure that John understands what you said, what I'm agreeing to. So he's going, he's going to have one full-time deputy in twenty-three, additional deputy. That guy is going to be, uh, he's going to be a hybrid because he's going to be paid from a full-time patrol deputy's money, but he's going to be ultimately transferred to Swan's Island under, under the contract.
I understand that part. Isn't this, you know, I, is this a comp, I think it accomplishes the same thing, doesn't it?
No, fees, loses his July first regular patrol.
It's for, it's filled by this high.
Yeah.
And then the other two that I've asked for part-time.
Are part-time.
Are part-time.
And they can, as far as I'm concerned, they're going to have to stay part-time unless he has an opening in his position caused by a vacancy.
That's exactly what I'm asking for.
Yeah.
If I'm asking for the part-time portion so they can be, they can show the academy that they're sponsored by an agency so that they can get the necessary trainings for a part-time position. So.
So.
Then if you're going to do that, shouldn't you approve hiring full-time effective July, whatever that is, for that full-time position? That's not on the agenda.
Is that your intent, Bill?
I don't know, I'm getting sick and tired of this computer putting me to sleep over here and whatnot. And I can't keep up with this, with, with motions, the thing is it's not letting me stay on. Uh, I, if you, if I, today is May, and if we're going to approve hiring him full-time effective July first, or the first Saturday.
Whatever.
Well, why can't you, why can't you do?
Let me tell you, let me ask something though, if, if you hire somebody, they don't need the part-time certification if they go right into the academy?
They do, if I, far as I, the way I understand it.
How does, the academy accepts, I call them civilian applications, two or three slots. Now, these people don't have part-time training, they come right in there and go right to the academy, go to work, you know, go to school.
Yep.
So I'm not sure how, I'm not sure whether or not the, the, everybody needs the part-time in order to get into the full-time academy.
Well, I'm much more comfortable having somebody using a part-time and then find out this is, this is a gold star. We want to hire this business, person for them, but, and then.
And I'm not opposed to hiring your Swan's Island guy today, part-time. I'm not opposed to that. And working him part-time until July first, getting him through your part-time training. That's what you want to do, isn't it?
Well, and actually I wanted to hire all three of them part-time so that they can, all three can get through their training.
And one of them's going to pay for his own training and.
Yeah, yeah, Lucas.
So you're, you're only going to have the cost of training, two of those.
Correct.
And so that's eight thousand dollars, but nevertheless, he's got seventy-five in his budget, so.
Okay, so what's on the floor now is a motion to take this under advisement, uh, and it was seconded.
And I'll, and I'll withdraw my motion if John withdraws it. Okay, so I.
That motion is vaporized. Uh, okay, Bill, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm trying to find this. So my motion now is to, Jim, you're going to have to bear with me because I'm going to type this as I go.
And by hiring at a minimum, uh, McDonough part-time gives Timmy the ability to use him in the jail where he's desperately needed.
Yeah. Well, so I think we're back to hiring all part-time, right, Bill?
But we need to take McDonough separate. I think. If my motion said to approve the employment of.
Galen McDonough.
So Bill, use the motion.
Well, in, in general terms, if we moved to approve the employment of Galen, today as part-time with the understanding that the first Saturday in July, whatever the date that is, he would be, he will be promoted to full-time. And as the July first additional deputy or something like that budget.
What, what if that, and, uh, Sheriff?
I, I was just going to ask that, um, you approve them part-time now. I'll come to you next meeting requesting it full-time because it's not on, it's not on the agenda today. And that'll give me time to have a discussion with Swan's Island and I'll have more information for that. Because he can't.
Two part-time.
Yeah, he can't hire anybody full-time without us anyway, is my thinking.
What do you mean?
If we hired all these three part-time today.
Yep.
He can't.
He can't, he can't, he can't promote those people to full-time without our consent.
Yeah.
Right, and I don't have a problem with that, provided you, you remember the conversations we've had today and those are going to hold two weeks. So we're, we're talking about hiring all three of these, whatnot, but only Galen will be, come full-time in twenty-twenty-three, paid for on July first patrol money, go to the academy, paid for by us, and then transferred to Swan's Island when he graduates at Christmas.
Well, yeah, he's got to have those discussions with Swan's Island.
Really, that's going to happen. If you can get him in the academy, that's going to happen regardless, whether he's talked to Swan's Island or not. It's, nobody needs to talk to Swan's Island about it, and I don't agree with it. If you want to find out whether or not Sunday's one will pay for it, come back and tell us that. Go ahead and make your pitch, I'm never going to agree to that gentleman. But nevertheless, if you can get Swan's Island to pay for that, you guys want to agree to it now, he has money enough to hire his July first deputy.
Well, here's my reasoning, the reason I'd like to see the Swan's Island thing happen is we struggled with keeping somebody out. And, and, and they have too, and they've, you know, they've mentioned that many times. And to get buy-in from the candidate, the community, those are all good things. To me, we're, we're closer to a path to success than we are today or we have been to the past. That's just my thinking.
And what we're doing right now, uh, and we've had a discussion with Sunny and they approved this, is that we are putting out two details, uh, to the patrolmen as extra details. So in other words, a patrolman can sign up, we send them to Swan's Island, this is on their days off. This is, this is an outside detail. We send them out on the first boat, for example, say they're going to go out Monday and Tuesday. We send them on the first boat Monday, take them off on the last boat on Tuesday. So they do twenty, they do ten hours each of those two days on the island. And Sunny was agreeable to that, uh, to get, to keep a presence out on the island. We've been doing that for months, son.
How much does that cost them a week?
Oh, whatever, the time and half overtime for twenty hours is.
Yeah, whatever the detail rate.
Yeah, whatever the detail rate is.
Yep, plus weeks ago to stay.
He stays at the cabin.
Thought that was empty there.
Well, it's empty because we haven't got anybody, put anybody in.
There's no furniture in it.
It's all furnished, we've been out and furnished it, it's got, everything is ready to go, and we've been using it for, I think this is the second month that we're doing that. Some weeks we get more than two.
The reason as to the cost is, is that if this goes on indefinitely through the summer, fall, into the winter and whatnot, then that's a substantial amount of money that you're going to add to the twenty-three thousand, you're going to ask Swan's Island to pay for it, so, for his training. I, you know.
Well, I.
I gotta believe that some point Sunny's going to say, you're breaking the bank up here.
You know, in, in response to that, at some point I'm going to say, I've got much less hair than I started with, whatever. That's turning gray, trying to find somebody who will, that we're doing every possible thing we can to do to satisfy a customer.
Well, customer and a community of the county.
Absolutely.
So, uh, I don't know, I, I, I'm for letting them have those discussions because the more people buy into this. I hate to say, hey, look, Swan's Island, we're going to pay for this noise and to butts, doesn't matter. I, I, I don't know, I'd like to see buy-in from them. This is a chance, you know, to get it.
So again, if we can approve these three part-time hires today, I'll have those discussions and I'll have that information possibly. Uh, I request to hire a deputy full-time July one out of this pool.
And he's got to come fast.
I'm going to move to approve the employment of Galen McDonough, who's going to this part-time deputy effective May sixth, twenty-twenty-three, step twelve A, twenty-three dollars and eighty-five cents.
Eighty-four cents.
Eighty-four, well, in fact, I'm taking the money out of there. Uh, I never was in agreement to that because if, for some reason we inadvertently got the wrong amount.
Yeah, sort of just.
It's just, it's, it's twelve A, whatever that, because that might even be different.
That's been through HR. Pardon? That's been through HR, we've seen it all paperwork, proper paperwork.
I know, I'm just saying that in the past, we've had to come back and do nothing because we, we didn't, or the, the amount was different because the union contract came into effect with an increase. So I'm just saying, I'm taking it out and my motion is it's step twelve A, whatever twelve A is.
That has the same.
That's my motion.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
unanimous.
I move to approve the employment of Anthony Jones of Elsworth as part-time deputy effective May sixth, step twelve A.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
unanimous.
I move to approve the employment of Lucas Keane of Bar Harbor as part-time deputy effective May sixth, it's, it's step twelve A.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Sheriff.
We'll, uh, we'll be putting those vehicles out on the lawn and, and sending out requests for vehicles.
And usually they go out to bid, they usually comes back in a month or something.
Yeah, I, I'll, I don't want them, for the next meeting, I'll probably have them for the first meeting next month because it's only just been two weeks for people to find it.
Yeah.
Guess that's it, thank you.
Great, thank you. Next up is maintenance, uh, monthly report, anything?
I know you're going to elaborate on your monthly report, is there any additions to that?
Uh, no.
Then I'm going to move to accept and file a maintenance report as presented.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So unanimous. Uh, next up is the roofing update.
Uh, yes, update is that it's complete, they've, they've done their, their job and, and, uh, did it without a crane, which was very surprising, but they did it. And so we're going to process that payment and look forward to dry roofs in, in that area. Although it did highlight a few other leaks, but we'll, we'll get them.
Did that cause a leak here in the wall too, did that somewhere?
Uh, that was from the jail. All three of those roofs, uh, this ramp, clerk's office, and the jail all converge right about there.
And that's where we fixed.
We fixed the ramp, by, and we may have more to do where the convergence takes place on the upper sections of flash.
Is it, is it membrane or is it?
That's a membrane, one is shingles and the other is flashing and shingles.
No, we got some bad news on the steps, huh?
Yeah. Uh, the contractor's withdrawn. That was just me. Saw the details, it's very disappointing, I've never had.
Well, the moment of concern, I don't know if I really understand that here.
The concern, said to me, was the way the water was designed to drain away from the project. So the architect had, uh, designed the platform. Now this would be the new, the grassy gravelly area, the current deck and the steps all to be pitched to drain down in a way and discharged out on.
They were going to drain on the steps, you know?
Right, all the way down, almost a waterfall, if you will.
Is, is that a good plan?
I didn't think it was a great plan, neither did the contractor. So Seelanders said, well, we can add, uh, scuppers and a drain. And we never really got to that, then he tried to make an appointment to go over it, we got there, they never showed, and.
I thought, God, they said they'd been here eight times.
Yes, but only, only about once with Seelanders. And I, I only saw him here once myself, so.
Are they looking for an excuse to get out of here with Seelanders dropping off?
I, I think it's a combination of those two things. But yeah, they, when it devolved, it devolved and they were just done.
So is, is it a bad marriage now, it's hopeless?
Yeah, it's not, it's, it's awful. They do, we do stand to recover performance bond penalty of five percent, which with your permission on pursuit, so forty-five hundred bucks.
But if we paid my costs.
Wow.
Uh, which time?
For the step.
Yeah, for just this project, I think it was like, we're going to do it for like twenty thousand.
That's not recoverable.
Well, it's non-recoverable, you know, at least we have a plan.
We do, we, we have the option to go back up again, which is going to be my recommendation.
Well, my recommendation is that we find another architect first.
Uh, well, I'm going along with that.
Now, those plans belong to us, correct, we paid for them?
Yeah, us.
And I think we should, we should look for another architect on this project and see if we can't have better results.
Well, I guess, would you want to, uh, interview a group of candidates or to make a selection?
Well, I think you're gonna have to.
Put an RQ up?
Wait a minute, that's just my suggestion, just hold on.
No, just write down options here.
I'm just disappointed that the architect we have on, and Mike is always my thoughts serve as well, but it sounds to me like reading information from the contractor, he's terribly disappointed just in, in Mike's performance. And I'm disappointed again that somehow the two of those entities couldn't get together, make this work, so I'd like to stand over the clean slate.
Well, you know, I would prefer you, Dennis, you're a lot more fair.
I agree with that, Son. It's, it's a, well, this is the fifth iteration of this. We originally started talking about this with, with, in conjunction with a facelift of that area, and then talk, went to the progress to the RCC renovations, which it was included. And then the first project was, was, removed the project more inside, as you recall, and that kind of was taken off the table at that time, and then it was included in our ramp project. And that was, was failed as well with respect to affordability, and then this time.
Dennis, could we avoid, excuse me, could we avoid some of the issues here? We just gave up, tried to do anything with the grassy back, crust rock.
I don't think that's the stick, like, no, it's, it's the, it's the getting rid of the water part of it, especially since we have snow.
Yep, we never had water problems with the existing.
Not, not terribly, because we softened and shut it. Now, if we have, if we have the equivalent of each snowfall in form of water now rushing down on.
Because we're gonna have heated steps?
That's right, then you're gonna have some ice down on that. We have the chief deputy parks, patrol tenants.
Yeah, all we're doing is moving the ice.
Right, and that's gonna be something that.
Which is, it's right, we, foot traffic.
Right, which, we brought this up before, and the idea was that, you know, we'll drain it away. Well, how it's gonna be drained.
In the corner of North Bay, right, isn't that the drain?
Yeah, less than 20 feet away is the drain.
So if you're looking at the two grass doors, you'll see the wall on the right, right in the very corner, there's a PVC pipe sticks up that, that's a drain.
Yeah.
Now, we can't, we can't.
And on the side of the, of the, of the retaining wall as well, the base of the retaining wall, there's a series of drains there, the water.
Gentlemen, I'd like, I'd like to get a new architect, what do you think?
We did the last bid, did we, did we get more than the one bid?
No, no.
That's all it came in.
Yeah, so, you know, and that's another issue.
I mean, I mean, there's probably a new architect that may be fine, you know, like, we're pretty much screwed on this getting done this year now. Like, it's never gonna get a new architect and the work done this year is out.
We might get lucky and get some respondents, get this done before snow flies, but.
Would you rather come back with a new architect who gave a good plan of the drain?
That's what I asked, and they, they told me they're not willing, they don't wanna re-engineer this project.
But if we gave them a set of plans from a different architect, had a good drainage system built in, do you think they'd reconsider?
Or would have to go out?
Maybe, maybe.
Well, we'd have to go up to bid for an architect, but if.
Why do we need, what we need is an engineer, not an architect?
Yeah, well, we need kind of both a little bit, yeah, there's. An architect's gonna come, come to you with a team that's gonna include, in this case, we need a mechanical engineer, civil, PE, and so, to take his drawings and make them work, make engineer them so that they'll work, and those details that include the slope and then, or the catch basin on the side, which was my plan, divert it away from the building and put a couple of scuppers over the upper deck and drain down through and out through the retaining wall, which seemed pretty basic to me, but they weren't willing to shit on the fly with that, they wanted. And to my, Sea Landers never came up with a design solution to the problem as expressed. So I think he was more of a, well, let's just get started, we'll work it out, and they weren't happy with that, and I can understand that as well. And a flying by the sea.
So, well, you've heard that, I guess, all that makes sense is for Dennis to come back with a plan after listening to 20 cents a day.
Yeah, I would say with, if you, if you, if you're kind of agree with Commissioner Clyde, as I am, let's get a new team, advertise for a new team.
And I think, John, it's absolutely right, I think it's no hurry now because we've, we've really put ourselves out of business for the 23.
Yeah, the good news is we did some repairs last year, and we're hoping up okay, and we can improve upon those hopefully to get us through the summer and the winter, we'll just keep throwing salt down.
Shit, salt and oil. Just because of the money we spent.
I got spare when I was under them.
Well, that is the other problem, I mean, we haven't wasted 20 grand though, because if an architect can take Sea Landers' drawings, modify those, that should save us $1,000 or a couple.
Yeah, yes. Exactly the same thing that he did with, with Rick Baum's plans from 1987.
Gentlemen, I'd like to suggest that Dennis contact Gardiner, and I'm just suggesting this, Dennis, don't get carried away. Yeah, my suggestion for all time, go right, but.
Understood.
Contact Gardiner, say, look, commissioners would like, would like to start working with a new architect. If I can find an architect right now, take these drawings with a short amount of time, redesign this with an acceptable drain, would you put us back on your work list? And if God said absolutely, then I think that makes it, I think this makes it an emergency enough for Dennis to go out and find an architect, but hopefully.
Do you, but I thought you said that ship at sail.
Well, that was.
With, with Gardiner?
With Gardiner, possibly, I haven't approached him with this idea yet.
Oh, okay.
And I'm saying that if Gardiner says, yeah, different architect, and you give us a drain that we can work with, we'll come back, we'll come back, we'll get it done this fall. Then that gives Dennis the ability to call us through the emergency, go find an architect who's willing to take the existing drawings and come up with a drain. And, I'm not an architect, but I know if my mission was to simply find a drain for this thing and for all the other work that was done, that's a pretty good gig, I would think.
It is.
And we might even be able to just get an engineer to do it.
I think that that's what.
You're gonna need an architect, we don't have clerks that work, so we're gonna need an architect.
Yes, but, yes, the architect would find an engineer, or they probably, almost all work with, with known personalities in the area, and I can think of several that can solve this problem in an afternoon, true or false, so.
In two weeks, could you, could you come back in two weeks and say, I'm talking to your admin?
Sure can.
Yeah, and, and if you call Gardiner tomorrow or today, he says, absolutely, I'll come back, and whatnot. And I suggest you start poking around and seeing what you can find, and it's two weeks to tell us that you found an architect and everybody's back on board.
Well, and the other scenario is that a lot of these contractors are so busy that they're trying, they, they're having to get out of.
That's what, that's, that's hauntingly feeling in the back of my mind, is the guy that made all of this work and he's looking for a reason, you know? It's just an easy way to cross off the list.
Yes, there is that possibility, it's more than a possibility.
It's more than just an irritation, it's an easy way to pare his list down for the summer, so, but if that's the case, we're, we are screwed. But let's try this.
Yeah. That's what I'll do.
Okay, anything else?
Uh, no.
Okay, next up is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is RCC, we have monthly report, anything?
Anything to add to the report? We have another report on Friday, I was notified by Chief Shane, we got him in fire, and the school had a problem getting to the 911. Sent that over to the emergency services communications bureau, they did a little investigation, found evil background, several years ago, they came in with this new law called Carrie's Law, where you're not supposed to have to dial 9 to get out, to call 911 anymore, the school did that. The person who was calling 911 actually inadvertently dialed 9, 911, and she got 991, which is a business signal. On the fourth attempt, they got through, and it was their fire, so it wasn't an emergency, but they did find that. Having said that, the courthouse, you have to dial 9, get 911. We're grandfathered right now, so we're not actually violating the law, but if we ever update our home system, we have to remember that, that has to go away. But that's one they have to have, so they figured out it was operator error, and they're gonna do some education with the staff, the students. You don't have to dial 9, that's cool.
I, like, I have a phone system, you can do either. So I.
I don't have an answer for you, I know, I know the national law was that that someone died because they were not able to access 911 because they had to dial 9, get out at wherever that. I think it was a motel or hotel, where a young lady tried to call 911.
And you know, that issue was number one on the list of to-do things when they were putting, you know, 911 together 20 years ago. They, a lot of people had no idea, they knew that was gonna be an issue. So before we go any further with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the ICC, to accept and file the RCC report as presented.
Moved in second, any further discussion or questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so unanimous. Next up is accept the resignation of full-time 911 dispatcher Emily Fenson, effective April 27.
So moved.
Moved in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Uh, request approval to hire Walt Kenny of Lemoine as full-time RCC dispatcher, it's that 9A effective May 3.
So moved.
Seconded. Moved in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Will this guy get you back up to full?
I have, I have, I have three open positions right now.
Out of, out of a total of how many?
Eleven, so I have, I have eight dispatchers right now, this is being numbered now. We had one, we had two others that we interviewed, I have one that's waiting, she's also interviewing the Bangor BD, so she's waiting to see what their offer is.
Is she from that area?
No, she moved here from Texas, she was a 911 dispatcher.
So she lives in this area?
She lives in Harmon.
Charman?
Which I expect she probably.
She's not, you've been driving through Bangor, the idiot.
Right, there, and I have one more, we were just waiting on background from, to the army, you have charge the army that was dismissed, so we needed to verify that before we hired him. So we just got that yesterday. We come back to you next week, we should hire, so that'll put us up. But we'll still be down one, but it's another conversation.
Can we vote on, we vote on?
Thank you.
Yep. Anything else? Okay, thank you very much. Uh, human resources, monthly report.
In your report. Well, just curious, after all this conversation, we had the Swans Island deputy report that he was hired as a transfer from the jail.
Well.
And which, he's already employed by us.
No, not yet. No, so he was, so they had made the offer and they were waiting for you to approve him. So I probably miswrote that, we can probably change that, we took an interview and applications.
Yeah, we know what that.
Because my, my plan was that to take him off, take that off of the availability for hiring for next, uh, next month.
And patrol deputy under that interview and accepting, that's not the case either, is it?
Um. Well, they are, that's what they were in the middle of doing. So I hadn't, I don't have my report in front of me, can I look it up?
Sure, uh, I'm just.
So, um, back I was hired, interviewing this week.
Now, when you say patrol deputy, at least for me, that means a full-time patrol deputy. And that's July 1. I don't know.
Okay, so then I didn't, so, um, my language is not correct then?
Well, in other words, they're interviewing part-time deputies, correct? Part-time patrol, what are they interviewing?
No, we just hired them.
No, but the third category she has is patrol deputy interviewing and accepting applications.
Right, so that is still, so, so what I have is that they ask you to leave that up for them, and so, um, so I guess, so being proactive for them would be to leave that up on Indeed and on our website in case they needed to have more applications. So I don't have not taken that down. Um, because that's still out in the public, in, in the public for hiring. So they're still looking for people for that, to, just so that in the future, if they needed a pool of candidates, they have that there, that was the request.
But the guy walks in, I don't, I don't, I wanna interview with life of this patrol deputy's job.
Yes.
He's not being told that that's a full-time position and it's available now.
Um, I would think that they would just put that, we would hold on to those folks for the rotary file. I mean, I had a bunch of people who did apply through Indeed and, um, and our website, and I'm waiting for permission to tell them that that position is no longer available. So we're just, so that's just, it's kind of per forma.
Yeah, it's sort of what all the police departments do, I guess, right?
But we start doing, quite honestly, what I'm saying, because what happened is that you had pools of applicants. It appeared you had a pool of applicants that didn't exist because when they didn't get hired and when they applied, they went somewhere else to work. So this pool of applicants is they might say, well, leave my application on file until it's filled, until I, you know, but the thing is, when you go to find them, they're, they're going somewhere, they can't stand there waiting forever.
Right, so, so my, what my, I'm doing now is that I'm asking each department to let me know who I can write no thank you notes to, and I have done that with the corrections and with the RCC. Um, and I'm, and I will be in contact again with the sheriff's department today to see now that we have those people and have it improved, may I take it down because you have been approved and you have your, your people you need, and who isn't I need to send no thank you notes to? So that that can be taken care of, so that we can, um, close the loop on it, and that's my goal.
Good, glad to see that you're so deeply involved in this now because four, it's almost a full hands-off.
Well, slowly but surely, we're trying to build a relationship and to show what is it that human resources can do and to take off the plates of the other players so that they're not having to be responsible for that, and to make sure that we are following federal and state regulations so that we are not breaking any laws. And that's really my goal.
I'm gonna move to accept and file a human resource report as presented. I didn't mean to cut you off, Mary.
Oh, no, good, if you're all set, I'll, I'll go back this way.
Now, moving in second, is any further discussion or question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So unanimous, thank you, Mary. Okay. Treasurer, approve monthly bills and warrants.
I'm gonna move to approve the monthly bills and warrants as presented.
Seconded. Any movement in second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Unanimous. Missioners, any comments or? Are all set?
I'm gonna move to adjourn.
Seconded. Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you.
You can discuss.
That's not debatable, that's true.